Okay. Here we go, people. I call this meeting to order. It is 7:00 PM on Monday, it is not December 3rd. This is our regular meeting of the Richfield School Board. In attendance this evening, we have board members Crystal Brockie, John Ashmead, Peter Templing, Paula Cole. I am Chair Christine Malik, and we also have Superintendent Yunowski. I would like to remind us of the Richfield Public Schools' mission statement. "Richfield Public Schools Inspires and Empowers Each Individual to Learn, Grow, and Excel." So we will keep that in our minds as we work together this evening. And we will restart with review and approval of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Templing, a second by Mr. Ashmead. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye, and the agenda is approved. So we will begin with information and proposals, reports and information from school sources, and the superintendent's update.
All right. So this is our annual truth in taxation meeting, which provides the opportunity for public comment. We do not actually have anyone signed up for public comment this evening. And so in the first of two presentations, prior to an action item on levy, Mr. Holgy is going to provide us with a scintillating amount of information in regard to levies and truth in taxation. Take it away, Craig.
Thank you. So we chuckle at that, but I was actually driving to work today and I was so excited about tonight because there's a lot of information, a lot of opportunities. And really, kind of when we think about our kids, it really is our funding that drives the opportunities for the district and the opportunities for the program. And so it's an opportunity for us to take a look at a lot of different pieces of information that we've looked at during the course of the year, when we set the budget, when we do the preliminary levy, and kind of encapsulate into one area with a snapshot of how our resources are being used, as well as looking at what our opportunities are for the coming year, already looking at 1920 and for what the levy opportunity is for that. Really, tonight is a required portion of our opportunities for the taxing authority of the school district. We will be doing four different things, taking a look at school funding and the 2018-19 budget. That's something that we're required to share with taxpayers as far as what our 2018-19 budget is, how school funding comes into place, take a look at the levy certification process, what are the decisions and what are the timelines that are in place for the school board and the taxing authority to be able to implement those levies, and then talk about the proposed 2019 levy, which, as Superintendent Yunowski said, is something that will come up as an agenda item later on in the meeting, but an opportunity to take a look at the levy and what are the opportunities around that. And then also provide opportunity for public questions and comments associated with any of that information that's being shared as part of this process. So when we drive in, first thing, we're going to take a look at school funding, where our information, where our numbers come from, where our authority comes from. And really, kind of, we drive down in the Minnesota Constitution, it provides for a uniformed system of public schools. And that stability of a republican form of government depending mainly upon the intelligence of the people, it is the duty of the legislature to establish a general and uniformed system of public schools. Legislature shall make provisions by taxation or otherwise, as will secure a thorough and efficient system of public schools throughout the state. And so it's really kind of substantial to note that that authority of the state in the constitution to provide that uniformed system of public school funding is critical to how we make our decisions and how we're able to operate as a local government. What does that mean? And as a result, school funding is highly regulated by the state. The state sets formulas which determine revenue, mostly based on per pupil. So they set guidelines and set state funding. They also set tax policy for local schools, what authority the local school has. They set maximum authorized property tax levies. Districts can levy less, but no more than authorized by the state unless approved by the voters. And the state authorizes school boards to submit referendums for operating and capital needs to voters for approval, but regulates these with limits. So we can ask our taxpayers for certain amounts of funding, but we still have limits and regulations on how much and how those funds can be used. The state authorizes the school board to implement property tax levies within their authority in certain areas, and then they also have funding that they provide for the school district as well. And we'll talk a little bit about how that information comes into play here. As noted, one of the biggest funding opportunities or factors affecting our funding is enrollment. And so this is just kind of a highlight of those enrollment fluctuations. We take a look at this back in October, as far as our enrollment information that comes in. We'll have another chance to look at that later in this month, when we see where we are in enrollment report. And then it's also something that we're constantly watching because our membership on a daily basis is what's critical to our funding, especially that coming from the state and certain fundings associated with our levy actualization. The other kind of key piece that we look at is, much of what we look at is general fund. That is the funding that goes to our primary mission of a school district as far as educating our students, and it is the largest portion. It also includes some things like transportation, as well as student activities, which are some smaller funds that are raised for specific purposes that are authorized by our student activity accounts. Other fund types that are factors in here are food service, community service, which impacts our levy and is authorized through community education programming, our debt service, which is funding our investments in our infrastructure and our investments in certain bond issues. Internal service is not impacted by the levy at all. That is our internal service fund for our health insurance and our dental insurance policies. So those are programs or funds that are funded by allocations into those accounts to be used for specific purposes. The OPEB trust is a bond issue, and then the OPEB debt service was something that the board had authority to issue back in 2008, 2009 for other post-employment benefits, which are those retiree health insurance benefits for our employees who have left service. And so that OPEB debt service, the community service, the debt service, and the general fund are those that are most impacted by our levy dollars. A lot of those others are driven more by revenue, by federal dollar regulations in the food service situation, as well as investments into those accounts for those internal service As we move on and we take a look at the 2018-19 budget, and this is some information we shared back in June. In the 2018-19 budget, and we've updated this with actual fund balances, we are projected to be ending the FY '18 year audit with a $9.1 million general fund total, with a grant total of $142,579,000, with $67 million in general fund revenue coming in, $66 million going out, with a net impact or benefit of $749,000. We're projected to go into our fund balance at the end of this year, resulting in a $9.9 million projected fund balance for 2019. This will be offset a little bit, and we have not revised these numbers with our reduced enrollment that came in from what we had originally projected. So that fund balance increase we're anticipating will be slightly less than that. About a half a million dollars is what we're projecting in the current year reduction in funding support from the state aid portion of it, but we are still in the process of that. And then one thing to take a look at in that grand total with $142 million going down to $119 million, most of that deals with our specific building construction fund, which was just implemented this year, associated with our facilities projects to go along with supporting that construction. So we anticipate that total grand, total fund balance to be going down because as we're using that fund balance in the construction projects over the next four years, we'll be seeing that taking place. The rest of those are all within reasonable up and down amounts and things that we took a look at earlier. This is a lot of small numbers, but it's basically very similar information to what we've presented in a number of different areas. This actually gets published in the Sun Current, as well as is posted on our website as part of an annual notification. It shows that FY '18 beginning fund balance of the '17-'18 year, what that is at the end of '18, and then what is projected to at the end of FY '19 with the revenues and expenditures in each one of those areas. So it's a two-year snapshot that is published in the Sun Current as part of our required notifications and our information to our community, also will be updated into our website. One of the things that's just of note on this document is the fact that for FY '18, the operating cost per average daily membership or per student was $13,615. In the last board meeting, we talked about setting that tuition rate, and that's where that number comes from, is all of that calculation derives down to that, which allows us to set that tuition rate. Taking a look at revenue by fund, and this is an all-funds look, you can see that we have 75% of our funding goes into the general fund account specifically. We have $67,636,000 in general fund, out of the total $90,762. 8.1% is in the internal service fund, which is revenue coming in for that insurance program. Then we have 9.65% for debt service, 3% in food service. Community service is 1.96% of our revenue. Building construction is 1.65%, and then a small amount for that OPEB trust and the debt service in those areas. One thing to note in here is, we talk about a $90 million revenue, but the internal service fund is really funded from dollars coming out of our general fund. So it's money that's going in to pay the equivalent of premiums for health insurance that goes into that account. So even though we have a $90 million revenue on the books, the actual revenue is represented better in this area when we pull out the internal service and the OPEB trust. So actual revenue coming into the district as kind of individual money is just over $83 million, with some of those being internal transfers between those funds.
Craig?
Yes.
Quick question on the internal service fund. Is that all health insurance, or is there other insurance that we are self-funding?
Our internal service is health insurance and dental insurance.
Self and dental, okay.
So when we then take a look at revenue sources, we can see that of that $90 million, 52% or $47 million is coming in from state revenues. $37 million is in local revenues or property taxes. This also includes that $7 million from the internal service because it's the local funding into that area adding up to that $90 million. And then 6% is federal, and just about a half a percent is insurance and other miscellaneous revenue sources. And then, taking a look at revenue sources of the general fund only, we see that $46 million is coming in from state revenues, and that represents 60, just under 69%. And then we see 26% is from that local revenue or property taxes in that area. And then 4.9% is federal. So again, the first slide, we're taking a look at all funds, including the food service, community service, as well as those internal service funds. And then in the second one, we're looking at just the general fund allocation. Moving to expenditures, so we have the money that's come in, and now we take a look at the expenditures and where do they go. First snapshot is taking a look at the programs that they're going to fund. And now we are drilling down and just looking at the general service or the general funds specifically. 45% is going to fund regular education, regular and secondary elementary instruction. 20% is going for special education. 6.8% is instructional support, which are other staff members that are working in the classrooms like paraprofessionals in those areas. About a half a percent goes to vocational education, and then 8.5% goes to pupil support. So that pupil support includes both our counselors, social workers, some other support services, as well as transportation, which is one of the larger funding areas within that category. 10.7% are sites and buildings. Administration is 4%. District support services, which are the payroll, the finance departments, and things like that, are 3.58%, and then other fixed costs are just under a half a percent. So again, we're looking at total expenditures in the general fund this year is $66.8 million. And of note is, taking out the sites and buildings, we have about 81.2% of all of our general fund costs are going into direct instructional services and programs. When you factor in the fact that students have to have a place to learn and have to have a facility to locate themselves, we have 90% of our funds that are really going directly in supporting education and where the education's taking place, as well as the instruction that's taking place within those areas. When we look at objects and where, how that money is spent, not on programs, but how it's used specifically, we see that, again, we have that $66 million of expenditures. 57% goes to salaries and wages, and 21.3% goes to employee benefits. So knowing that we are a large human capital-based organization that relies on great people to do great work with our kids, 78.3% of that is going directly into employees working for the school district. Purchase services of 12.28%. One of the larger factors in this is, we outsource a certain portion of our transportation, including our special education transportation and our homeless, highly mobile. So that purchase services is a category that is in the support, that's staff doing work and services doing work in those areas. And then 5.5% is supplies and materials, 3.9% are capital expenditures, and then just a small amount of those expenditures in miscellaneous areas. One of the things that the board has been very tuned to is our financial stability and sustainability of our programs and how do we maintain that. And so our general fund balance is one of the areas that we have that opportunity to take a look. Just some highlights here, we've been working towards sustainability of our programs and reducing significant annual changes. And so we've had that whole increase in the fund balance, and you can see that we've been successful in that area. The fund balance increased from, in our general fund, from $7.5 million in '16-'17 to $9.1 million in '17-'18, and to $9.9 million is what's projected at the end of this year in that total fund balance. That represents a 6.3% unassigned fund balance percentage of our expenditures. Couple areas and just things to note on here. The non-spendable, you can see went up this year. We had some advanced lease payments that were due on July 1, and so we made those payments in June so that we didn't go in debt in those areas and have them be past due. And so we made those payments in advance, and we anticipate a similar expenditure next year. So that's something that rolls over in that fund balance of non-spendables. Restricted fund balance is used for things that are categorical funding programs like federal programs, our Title I services, special education, as well as capital expenditures and other areas that have specific things that they can be used for. We saw that increase slightly to $2.9 million projected at the end of this year, which has to do with some changes and things that roll over into the following year. In those areas, what's projected in our assigned fund balance, that is areas where the district has authority to set up assigned fund balances to be used for specific purposes. One of the things that's been longest in this area is, we have a fund that's set up for our turf, maintenance and replacement, that where revenue is coming into that area. As we've taken a look at our assigned fund balances in the past and budget assumptions, we've also looked at some sustainability initiatives in that area, including funding for program improvement efforts, either things that we've implemented, that we want to be able to make sure we're able to sustain that if we have changes in enrollment, as well as the opportunities to use one-time expenditures for certain implementation strategies. We also have some assigned fund balances for enrollment fluctuations. So we've started to put things into buckets to help us with that sustainability so that we can predict some of those things that we know are, so that we are prepared for some of those things that are unpredictable, I guess is the way that I should probably say it. The unassigned fund balance is that, which has not been allocated for any of those purposes, and that has some flexibility with how those dollars are used or how those are carried over. The board has indicated an interest in that sustainability initiative, and so there's been an effort to grow that. Our target goal of that unassigned fund balance is 6% to 8%, or 4% to 8% is what was previously approved in board policy. And so where we previously were sitting at 4%, we've been making that effort to get more to that mid-range or upper range of that 4% to 8% goal, when we have the resources to do that. Moving on to the school levy, and this is where we have the opportunity to raise funds through local taxes. The state has granted the board certain authority in those areas, as well as we received funds for things that we have asked for, where the voters have been very supportive of the Richfield Schools and supported us most recently a year ago, in both an operating referendum, as well as a capital project referendum for improving our facilities, as well as other authorities in those areas. The information included in this presentation accounts for the preliminary levy when the board initially approved the proposed levy, maximum levy back in September. And it will have an opportunity, and this, sorry, and this information also is what was included in the tax statements that went to the homeowners or the property tax owners, the property owners in the Richfield School District. So all of the assumptions were based on that maximum levy that was approved in September. And we have that opportunity to take a look at that later this evening, and then that final levy has to be set by the end of the month here. Property taxes are based on a number of things. State-determined formulas in a lot of areas, and we'll go through these line by line. Some increases in tax levies are revenue neutral and are actually offset by state aid adjustments. So an increase in tax levy can result in a reduction in state aid, or a reduction in a local levy can result in an increase in state aid. And so there are fluctuations based on the tax capacity within the district in some of those areas. There are actually 30 different categories of school levies when we look at all of our funds. And so there are a lot of different components that are tied in, and it's not just, you can tax up to certain amounts, but you can tax for specific purposes within certain authorities. Levy limits are set either by state law or voter approval. And the Minnesota Department of Education calculates the district levy limits. There's about a 5,000-line item document that calculates those different areas, over about 45 different pages that shows how each one of those is calculated and recorded. So it's calculated for the district based on the inputs that we have for our enrollment, based on their calculations of where the authority is, and then it's actually administered by the county. So that's why the county sends out those tax statements, and the county receives those taxes, and then distributes them accordingly to where they belong with their municipalities. When we take a look at the government levy cycles, cities and counties, the budget year is the same as the calendar year. So 2019 taxes provide revenue for 2019 budget. For school year, our budget year actually begins July 1 and coincides with the school year. So the 2019 taxes provide revenue for the 1920 fiscal year. And that budget will be adopted in June. So unlike the city where they're able to make decisions right up until during this last fiscal quarter for the next year, we're making decisions for what's going to impact us in the spring and summer of 2020, so an additional six months out from that original calendar year cycle. This is just a graphic that shows kind of that legislation for authorities put into the 2018 year. Both the city, township counties, and the school districts are making their decisions regarding the tax levy in August through December. Taxes are received for the 2019 year during that calendar year. It's for the budget year for those cities and counties in that same 2018, but it's for our July through June 1920 budget year. Well, highlighted that process, MD establishes that a levy authority in September. In September, the board approves the preliminary levy, which is certified by the school board at that time. In November, the county mails those proposed tax statements that went out that said, here's how much your taxes are proposed to increase for each one of those different categories. In December, we have this public hearing, and then the final levy certification is due by the school board to be sent to the county and the Department of Education by the end of the month. So that's where our timeline is in place here, either taking action at tonight's board meeting or at the second meeting in December. In a nutshell, what does that mean for school district revenue? Based on all the calculations that have been input in that maximum levy that was authorized preliminarily by the school board, it results in an increase in our revenue as a school district by 5.3%, which is $1.4 million in funding for the school district. Given various funding factors, the impact on Richfield taxpayers will be different, and we'll look at, and we'll look at that in a few different slides, as far as how that impact is not necessarily resulting in a 5.3% increase on each one of our taxpayers or our homeowners. When we look at that 2018 payable levy, there are really, that increase is driven by three different key areas. One is adjustments in enrollment. One of the things that we do is we project what our enrollment is going to be in that year that is, that starts, you know, almost a full year out or nine months out from today's date. And so we have the opportunities to make adjustments, as well as just get recalculated again once actual average daily membership over that time period. So we have the projected enrollment for this year. Our '18-'19 school year occurred nine months ago, or a year ago. We get adjustments based on changes in enrollment for FY '19. One of the things we had projected in our levy for this current year is less students than actually showed up, even though we have more students, there are fewer students that came in than what we had projected by the time the school year started. We do our enrollment projections really in kind of a December, January, and February timeline, trying to see what some of those assumptions are coming into place. So we saw some increases in that area. We also saw increases in our FY '17 actual final adjustment, once we actually had the students coming in, and have that calculated out with all the special education tuition transitions and things like that. The second area is in that OPEB benefits area. That's the ability to levy for unfunded portion of our other post-employment benefits or retiree health care costs. Current bonding provides funding for approximately 50% of that, and we have an actuarial evaluation that occurs every two years to take a look at how much we are funded for those costs. And then in 2009, the state legislature actually authorized school districts to levy for those other post-employment benefit costs as well. A couple of years ago, or about a year ago, we found out that even though we have the bonds in place that are funding about 50%, the board actually has authority to fund or levy for the unfunded portion of that, so that we can maintain some of that financial stability in the funding associated with our other post-employment benefits and use those dollars as a part of that. Those other post-employment benefits are actual cost expenditures from the previous year, so it's not a projection, it's not based on enrollment, it's not based on tax capacity. We take a look at what our other post-employment benefits cost for, in this case, '17-'18, and the board has authority to levy for the unfunded portion of that. So if we're currently funded for about 50%, we have the ability to levy for that additional 50% that's not funded by our bonds, which allows us, 10 years out, if we've used all of our bonds, then we end up with a zero funding portion of it, which doesn't look very good on our books, which is one of the benefits of it, and then also just showing that sustainability. And then finally, we have that increase due to net tax capacity. This primarily affects our technology referendum, whereas the property values and the tax capacity of the district has gone up, we see that certain levy lines also go up with that as This is just a quick snapshot of the historical summary. We can see we're at $18, $19 million, kind of varying in that area from 14 to 17. And we see this large increase last year, going from $18.9 million to $26.5 million. That is a direct result of our operating referendum approved by the voters, our bond referendum approved by the voters, as well as our long-term facilities maintenance that is going to fund the indoor air quality part of our facilities project. And so those are really the three largest driving factors, all of which were communicated as part of that referendum as far as potential impacts on the taxpayers. And then for the current maximum levy, it was set at $27.9 million, which is that $1.4 million increase that we talked about briefly. So what does that mean, and as we say, how that impacts taxpayers, how that $1.4 million impacts taxpayers is different. This is just a snapshot of, if you have a $200,000 home, our average is right around $200 to $210,000 home. With all of those assumptions coming into place, a $200,000 homeowner would see about a $91.90 reduction in their taxpayers, in their property taxes for schools next year, which is about a 9% reduction in what their property taxes are. That assumes that that $200,000 home remains a $200,000 home. We know that market value's going up, that a lot of things change, and property values are changing right now. And so what we've done is taken a look at, outside of that, how does that impact the taxpayers in Richfield schools? So realistically, we know that most people's values aren't exactly the same. We worked with the city and kind of identified, what does that impact on the average homeowner then, and used a calculation tool that we have that shows with those property taxes, what does that mean? And it results in a $19.60 per year increase, or 1.9% increase in the school property taxes for that average homeowner. That assumes that a 2018 average Richfield home estimated market value was $207,000. That information came directly from the city, which came from their assessor, which came from the county. The 2019 average Richfield home estimated market value is going up to $229,000, as far as what that taxable value is, which is that 10.6% average market increase, or average market value increase. So this is a snapshot of what would be on people's property tax statements showing that impact. So the voter-approved portion and the other approved portion, and what the total levy is in that area. The 18 residents, payable 18 residents had 513 and 544 with a $1,058 property tax. In '19, based on that maximum levy, that's supposed to go up to $1,077.78, with a $19.60 increase in their taxes, or that 1.9%. This is average homeowner price, or average home price, this is average increase. Some homes saw increases in values higher than that, some homes saw increases in values lower than that, but that's kind of the average of what was reported from the city as far as what that average increase was. One of the things that I'll just kind of note in here, because if you've done the numbers and you think about how many homes it would cost at $20 per year to come up with $1.4 million, it's difficult to have that math add up. We have some increases in tax capacity, but one of the big things that we've realized this year is a significant increase in our fiscal... this year is a significant increase in our fiscal disparities funding, which reduces what that tax rate is for local property taxers, because in 1971, a fiscal disparities account was set up and legislation was put into place that pooled the seven-county metro area into one area, where a certain portion of funding goes in to fund each one of those school districts or municipalities, and then based on the tax rate and the tax capacity, mostly looking at what the commercial value of property is within different areas, saw some changes, and then distributes that money out to those, taking a little money away from those that are more property wealthy, giving a little bit more money to those that are less property wealthy, based on what the tax rates are. And so much of this, we also are realizing that $1.4 million increase with a small adjustment in the levy of actually $208,000 is all that our local taxpayers are having directly paid for out of their property taxes. Couple of quick looks, levy history, again, just some changes in the general fund. We can see those increases going up, given the payable year to 2019. Community service is relatively flat, much of that is based on the overall population in the city of Richfield or in the Richfield School District area, as well as the projected population of those under five. The debt service, we can see went up last year when we incurred that additional cost associated with our facilities project, and then the OPEV debt stayed relatively low and actually decreased two years ago in the payable 18 levy when we did the bonding reissue. We reduced that taxpayer burden by about $250,000 in that OPEV trust because of that refunding portion of it. Quick levy summary, $18 million is general fund, $465,000 is community service, 8.5 million is debt service, and then $818,000 is the OPEV debt. And then this is the start of our 30-plus lines, or 30 lines of different property taxes, and I'm just going to highlight a few different areas here. One of the things that we've talked about every year is, what are the things that are impacted by enrollment, what are the things that are impacted by tax capacity, and how are these different fundings calculated out? So really, the areas that are impacted mostly by enrollment are the equity, the operating capital, the alternative teacher compensation, the A&amp;I, the referendum, the local optional revenue, the safe schools, the long-term facilities, and the career and technology. So those are driven by the number of students that we have enrolled in the district. The net tax capacity has a direct relation on the referendum specific, so as the property tax, or the tax capacity of the district goes up, or the market values go up, we see that amount rising, so that's why it's gone from 2.7 to 2.9 to 3.2 with that $227,000 increase. And then some things here at the bottom are actually based on our actual expenditures in areas or projections of actual expenditures that get trued up later on. Those are specifically the other post-employment benefits. This is, as I mentioned earlier, based on the actual expenditures in that area and a portion of that specifically, the building leases, so our cost for leasing facilities and leasing space outside of the school district own property, health benefits. This actually dates back to health benefits prior to 1997 for employees in that specific line item category. Reemployment insurance or unemployment insurance is based on projected actual expenditures and gets trued up in any year. And then, so those are the areas that are based on actual, and then the abatement and other adjustments have to do with people who have appealed their property taxes and either received reductions in that, and so then that has to be spread over the pool in a different way, and so it gets spread out that way in an abatement adjustment. Larger categories here, just to kind of notice, we talked about the net tax capacity and the referendum. The local optional revenue in the referendum areas are impacted most specifically by the enrollment projection changes for previous year, and most of those were in the adjustments at this point. Operating capital is similar, tied into enrollment, and then the other post-employment benefits is at $815,000. And again, that's something that we had proposed, taking a look at last year. Given the fact that we had just approved the, or had the voters approve our referendum and our bond project, the board intentionally decided not to levy in that area, but it's an option that we then included on this levy in the preliminary levy certification. Community service is increased by about $18, so relatively flat, and we see that as relatively consistent with the population in the district, and some small adjustments in those areas. I'll just tie in here, so the basic levy is going to support our overall community education program. You can see the early childhood and family and the home visiting tend to be dealing more with our early childhood programs specifically and help support that. We've actually blended our funding for early childhood and some of that home visiting with some of our early, other early childhood programming to provide a comprehensive program in that area. The debt service fund includes the debt levy, long-term facilities, debt service, so this is a variety of areas that are tied in with long-term facilities specific funding, abatement adjustments, that OPEV bond, OPEV debt excess, and then abatement adjustments in the debt areas as well. And then this is just that overall snapshot of all of that in one page, taking a look at that, and that really concludes the information that I have for the truth and taxation hearing. I'd be available for any questions, or if there's any community members who want to make a public comment, this would be an opportunity for them to do so as well. Yes?
I think it's likely more to check for my own knowledge. I was just sharing that this can feel like a foreign language, and so I want to make sure that I, like, in the most simplistic terms, have an accurate understanding in my head, which is, the proposal before us is to levy the maximum amount that we approved several months ago. That even though the percent change on that one slide was negative, let me get, where are we? There we go with it, there we go.
Oh, this one?
Yep, even though that percent change is negative, the result for our taxpayers is an increase because of the home value increase that the county is assessing. Is that an accurate summary? I guess what I'm trying to do, just to be more direct, is square this slide where we see a percent change that is a negative, and the next slide, which shows the increase for homeowners and taxpayers.
Yep, so, so yes, part of that ties back in with the net tax capacity, and this is a lot of times what we tend to look at. So, you know, most school districts will put this grid up and say, a $200,000 home is going to realize a, you know, 9% reduction. In our effort to be real forthcoming to our, you know, property tax owners in our community, we wanted to kind of bring that realistic component of people's home values are going up.
Which we should.
And so, part of it is that funding is spread over that group in a different way. So if only one person's home value went up and nobody else's did, then that would be true. With the portions that are tied in with enrollment, it is based on the overall tax capacity or the property values, the resident marginal value, and then the net tax capacity of the district. So a lot of it ties in with the fact that property values are going up is a portion of it, but it's also, if everybody's went up the same amount, some of those things would be spread over the same group in the same area. It really drives to the enrollment is the driving factor for some of those increases, as well as that OPEV benefit and the tax capacity going up. So that's where it ties into how people are taxed or what they're assessed at.
So, quick question, Craig, just to make sure that I've got this. I think that I've got the concept. Really, what we're, are we comparing the prior year's taxes, so it's a $200,000 home in the prior year to a $200,000 home in the current year? So what we're really saying is, if you were to put those two houses side by side, they'd be different houses. It would be the less expensive house in the prior year and the more expensive, or the less, more expensive house in the prior year and the less expensive house in the current year. So the share of total tax capacity has gone down because everybody else is going up, and we artificially held that $200,000 stable?
I think so, sorry.
If you've ever played life, think of those little cards if you're home with life.
So, here's going to be my snapshot, and it does get confusing, and, you know, so, if we levy the maximum, we see our revenue increase in our levy by 5.3% or $1.4 million, okay? If somebody, somebody's home was valued at $200,000 last year and is valued at $200,000 again this year, they would see a 9% reduction in their property taxes.
But there is no such home.
Or $91.
That's what you're saying, is there is no such home.
Very few, if any. So if somebody appealed their property tax and saw that stay the same, that would be the 9%. Realistically, according to the city, the average home value is going up 10.3%. And so with that increase, the average home value went from 207 in the 18 tax year to 2,029,000 in the 19 tax year, so that results in a $19.60 per year increase in their property taxes, which is 1.9%.
And that $19 is real dollars, sort of absolute value dollars, not inflated dollars, right? So this is actually, I like this because this really does show what the impact is.
This is why I was really excited this morning coming, because we could drill down and say, here's reality, and for me, this kind of created the clarity on. The other piece with this is $1.2 million of that 5.3% increase is coming from other areas in the metro area helping support our property taxes. So their property taxes are reduced because of that fiscal disparities allocation to it, so we receive 1.4 million. The school district, taxpayers in the school districts in Richfield will pay $208,000 more on their property taxes spread over that, and then there's additional revenue coming to the district.
Yeah, interesting.
Or coming to reduce the tax liability of our property taxpayers in the community of Richfield, based on our tax capacity and the property tax, or the tax rate in Richfield schools.
So is it then accurate to say, again, just using this average value, that the increase in value for that home is 10.6%, but the increase to schools in terms of your property taxes is that 1 point something percent?
The increase in revenue, the...
The increase in their taxes for schools.
So if my property value went up 10.6%, I'm really only going to pay 1.9% more in taxes.
That's what I was trying to say.
In school district taxes.
Thank you. That is accurate, great.
So I would propose, this is what I would propose we do for future presentations, is get rid of that slide where we're comparing apples and oranges, where we're comparing that $200,000 home and ignoring inflation, because all that does is so conclusive, and it's actually a situation, like you said, that hardly ever exists in reality, so, thank you for...
Trying to show both ways.
Thank you for doing this, but really, I mean, that prior, that one is...
It exists.
Yeah.
And, again, like, we looked at one property that saw an increase of greater than 10%, had about a 15 to 20% increase. We saw properties that had a 5% increase, and so, you know, we think showing both shows that there are some variabilities, knowing that here's the average, but it gives a snapshot, and realistically, what this can do is say, well, if I was 200 and I'm going up to 250, I know it's 1,017, and I'm going up to 1,187, so I'm going to pay that difference if my home value goes up by 50,000. We can break that out into some different increments, but there are just different ways to look at it. This gives that comprehensive of, you can find close to where you're at and make some assumptions. If I went up half that, that's about that variation that I'm going to see. There's a whole bunch of other issues, like homesteading and things like that, that come into play on these assumptions and calculations, that are some even greater variables, but these are what we try to show some clarity.
I have one last question, and it's about the OPEV debt levy in particular, because I know some years we do levy on that and some years we don't, and this year, the proposal is that we do. It would be helpful for me just to know what are the, what are the consequences by not doing it versus doing it?
Putting ourselves in a worse fiscal situation ten years from now.
So it's the weighing out the short term versus the long term?
And as a general, as a general matter, principle, at least my opinion is, we are currently in a good economy. We are expecting that the state budget's going to be in relatively good shape in the coming 24 months or 12 months at least. Sun is shining, we better make A, because this is not going to last forever, and we will find ourselves, sooner or later, we're going to find ourselves facing shortfalls.
That's helpful.
Yep.
Thank you.
And when we levy those funds, the board has authority with how those are used, so they go into the general fund because there are expenditures coming out of the general fund for that purpose. If we find that there are resources there, we can put some of that money back into that OPEV trust if we want, or we can put it into an assigned fund so that we have some more flexibility with it, or we can use it if we are seeing changes in enrollment and have some of that variability, but there's some flexibility with how those dollars are used. Again, we look at it as its options. As one person indicated, you know, we keep telling the state that they don't give us enough levy authority and give us ability to create funds locally. When we have that opportunity, we need to take it seriously, knowing that the board is very thoughtful about how they spend, how much we increase property taxes, that, you know, here's a year that we have some opportunities to do that, with very little impact on our property taxpayers.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, so with that, and again, we will come back in business to have a vote and have a conversation around that. So we're going to bring up our team from the high school to talk about some of the work we have been doing in regard to pathway development at Richfield High School. So as Mr. Holdy steps aside, we'll turn things over to Principal Daniels.
Thank you, Superintendent Unowski. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for joining me this evening. I am here to give a presentation on the work that the high school team has done thus far in preparation for rolling out career pathways at the high school next year. When I think about the work that we've enjoyed the last few years, we've been working very intentionally and intently around transforming the high school. And last year, we implemented several, several technical changes by changing the structure of our day, implementing PLCs during school day, adding an additional hours, pushing back our start time. We've done those things to improve, ultimately to improve learning and to create a robust learning experience for our students. So now I'm here for you this evening to talk about what the second phase of the high school transformation will look like. And we have done this work with the teaching and learning team, with Tia Plaisen, Dr. Robey, Dr. Heinz, who's the principal of the middle school, who's here right now, and then we also have Meredith, who is here, and she is our project manager, Meredith, don't you reach, right there. She's our project manager, making sure that we stay on track with our, our plan. So the objective of career pathways, first, we've done, you all know, we've done a lot of work as a school district to engage the community, to engage parents, and to engage students as to what would be most meaningful to them in regards to their experience in Richfield Public Schools. Last year, we had the historic Reimagine Richfield, in which students really elevated their voices, and they talked about what they wanted to see in their experience here at Richfield High School and Richfield Public Schools overall. And so we are elevating those voices, and we're actually acting on what students, parents, and community members have said that they want to see. And so when I think about what the end goal or the expected results are, this is all about improving engagement, improving achievement, and also retaining our students. This is what this work is about. So our timeline for the next three years, we've kind of broken this up into year one, which is our current year, year two, and year three. So this year, we've looked at what is most logical for us to roll out as career pathways next year, and then we've developed a plan to actually roll that out. For next school year, we are going to actually implement the three things, or the three career pathways that we've chosen are most logical and most feasible for us to roll out for next school year. And then during the 2021 school year, we will assess what we've done, see if it's working, see what changes we need to make, and possibly see if it's logical, if it's fiscally an opportunity for us to add more pathways at the high school. This school year, we are working under this timeline. This fall, we have identified the career pathways we would like to roll out. We are working with our project manager to actually figure out what the implementation plan will actually look like for this to come to fruition, and we are either developing And we are either developing partnerships or we are refining partnerships with people. So that's with the dealerships, that is with District Two Eighty-Seven, and that is also with Hennepin Technical College. In December, we are here before you right now presenting what we've done to date. And we are working closely with Teresa Rosen, who was leading our work around our registration course catalog to ensure that we are incorporating those courses into our student course catalog for them and our parents to make informed decisions as to what they want their child to take next school year. During the winter-spring months, we will begin to recruit students for the career pathways. We will continue to solidify our partnerships with our partners. And we will begin to look at the ramifications and the impacts of the decisions that we've made. What is crucial is the staffing and also this piece around what needs to happen at the middle school, and you'll hear a little bit more about that in the next slide, and transportation to get our students to HTC. And then in the summer, we are going to work on the curriculum in order to actually execute this and finalize the logistics for the nineteen-twenty school year. So when you look at this graphic, we, we are working backwards. One thing that the team that has been working on career pathways has been very clear about, and we've been very unwavering around ensuring that every kid who goes through a career pathway at Richfield High School, they walk away with this experience in which they have a livable, they're able to make a livable wage. We do not want students to walk away with experiences in which they just make minimum wage, but we want to maximize as much as possible what our students are able to make as a wage once they leave the high school. We also want them to earn college credit. And so with that being the end goal, we started at the middle school. And we said, you know what, whatever career pathway we are offering at the high school, let's work backwards. And so how do we expose students to what they will possibly experience or be able to explore at the high school, at the middle school? So Dr. Heinz and her team, they're working on developing courses or exploratory courses that mirror possibly the experiences that the students will have in the career pathways that we named and developed at the high school. Then at the high school level, we are developing, working with our partners to develop the technical skills and identify the courses that our students need to take to ultimately, if you look at what will happen during the 2021 school year, for students to earn certification. So right now, we are planning for the exploratories at the middle school and the courses that will help our students hone technical skills that they will need in order to actually earn the certificate in the 2021 school year. And when they graduate, hopefully be able to make a livable wage and earn college credit. So we were pretty common sense and logical about how do we select the career pathways that we roll out at, at the high school? And so we, we have, we have data, we have quantitative data and we have quantitative data, and we, we looked at what we had, and we looked at all the resources that we have currently right now to see what is most logical, what is most feasible for us to bite off as a high school for next school year. So we looked at student interest, and we analyzed student interest by Teresa going back and looking at where students are, the courses that students are choosing. What students, what courses are students choosing, what are they interested in, and how do we build upon that? Again, the livable wage potential, the potential for college credit, the staffing implications in our current context, funding opportunities, so what community partners are bringing to the table, and the current partnerships we have and possible future partnerships that we can develop. So what you see here, if you look at what's written and emboldened, you see the career pathways that we have chosen to move forward next school year. And what, what you see that is not bolded are possible career pathways that we will explore during the 2021 school year. But what we felt like was most logical was for us to explore a career pathway around auto technology. Not body, not, what we talked about, not shop, but auto technology, because that leads more to a livable wage, it's more competitive. Computer science, because we have, I think, received a STEM grant, and we have courses that are offered at the middle school right now with our eighth graders, and those eighth graders will be ninth graders. And so how do we continue to build upon that at high school to continue to expose those students to STEM opportunities, so computer science? And also, we have a very robust culinary arts program here at the high school. So those are the career pathways we are moving forward, and then the ones that are not emboldened are some possible opportunities for us to explore again in the 2021 school year. Specifically for the auto technology pathway, at the middle school, for the current school year, they are looking at what explored, what exploratories or the courses they can develop to align with what the students will possibly experience at the high school through the auto technology program. At the high school, we, through the registration process, will be identifying students who would like to take courses at Hennepin Technical College through our partnership with District Two Eighty-Seven to take advantage of some of the auto technology courses. For the nineteen-twenty school year, we're simply going to launch the middle school courses. We're going to launch the high school courses. We have to, the caveat here is we have to make sure that our, the details, working with transportation, that is tight, because Eden Prairie is, of course, off campus, and so we will need to transport students, more students, to Eden Prairie and back to the high school. And we will begin to work on what the certification program will look like for the future. Also, I want to add with the auto technology programs that we are partnering with Two Eighty- Seven for like the next two years as we build this program in-house ourselves, because we are of the belief that we will take care of our babies better than someone else. So this, we're leveraging the partnership that we have right now in order to get this career pathway off the ground, but we actually want to actually bring our students back home per se, so we can take, have a great care of them. And then during the 2021 school year, continue to develop exploratory courses and just continue the work that we started in the nineteen-twenty school year, adding this certification piece at the high school. This career pathway should say computer science, so for the computer science program, again, continue to develop the courses. I mean, each pathway follows the same formula. So the development of courses during the eighteen-nineteenth school year, recruitment of students. For the nineteen-twenty school year, the actual implementation, and for the 2021, begin the certification work. And for each of these pathways, what I want to say, the caveat is that we are doing all of this work to offer this. However, we really need students, when we talk about this whole recruitment piece, we really need students to register for these, these classes in order for us to be fiscally responsible as, as a high school. And then in the current year, for our culinary arts program, again, the development of courses, continue to nurture the partnership. Ms. Rosen and I met with Hennepin Technical College a couple of weeks ago to, and we brought our culinary arts teachers to have a conversation about what they're currently offering, what we're currently offering, and how we can work together to begin to build the articulation so our kids can take culinary arts classes on campus and work towards earning college credit at HTC. Again, during the nineteen-twenty school year, we're going to implement, explore what the certification program will look like. And again, during the 2021 school year, actually have a certification program in place and see if it's most feasible to implementing the pathways. What we just wanted to share here and illustrate here is that there are courses, when you look at this, the engineering, manufacturing, and technology, that is considered a, a cluster. I think it is a cluster, a cluster at the state level. And so underneath this cluster, our, would fall our computer science program and our auto tech program. And these are courses that we currently offer that possibly will align with those, those career pathways. And under the business management and administration, we have our culinary arts program, and those are the courses that align with that pathway. And so this is our presentation to date as to how we plan to continue our work to offer a challenging, engaging, and relevant learning experience for our students that attend Richfield High School. Do you have any questions?
How many other high schools in the metro are doing this?
Oh, several. Burnsville High School, White Burn Lake High School.
Rod and Zell is rolling this out.
It's, it's more. I can't, I can't even.
Edina is starting their pathway conversations. Or was it Eden Prairie is starting theirs?
Burnsville that has the particularly robust career pathway program, but it's having a lamb urging in metrowide.
Yeah. Once upon a time, when I was an assistant principal, pathways were popular. But then there was a going away from pathways, and let's talk college, 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 two year, four year colleges and universities. But now, as a request of, which is why we're, you know, having a conversation, which is why we have a partnership with the dealership. The dealerships, they came to the tables and we're offering you this funding because we have a need. And so because they have this need for salespeople, for auto tech people, for various different things, they said, you know what, we're, we're willing to offer these dollars for you all to begin to build this interest in the high school to meet a demand that we have as, as a dealership. And so that's what we're hearing, and so we are adjusting to what our, again, parents, community members, and business partners are saying that they need.
I think for both the existing courses, which is really helpful to see, so thank you for including this, and then these new pathways that are being developed, like you said, recruitment and actually having students who want to do this is the key to all of it.
Yes.
So what are some of the strategies that you and, and your team are thinking about to help us make sure that we're actually making those connections to our students?
Well, I think the great thing is, again, what we did was, we looked at what students are actually requesting right now. And so I think that what is most advantageous for us is that we already have, we're already staying on the gold line when we think about auto tech, when we think about culinary. And the, the computer science is something that is budding, but culinary and auto tech is already a demand. And actually, when I met with Dr. Kasia Willhite, she's over the Richfield College Experience Program, the students that are at Normandale, they actually have an interest, interest in what we're doing around career pathways. They're interested in what Hennepin Tech has to offer. And so we are going to just make it widely known to students that we are intentionally doing this work, and we are going to be crystal clear about what we're offering and giving our counselors the language, our teachers the language. We have our parent info meetings that we, we have annually in which we inform parents of what we're, what we're offering. We also meet with students and get in front of students and let them know what we're offering to market, market, and sell, sell what we're doing. Teresa in the past has also been very creative in working with our student government and, and other student leaders to develop video, video, what is it, videos? Videos and other recruitment criteria. So we're just going to work with Meredith, our project manager, to again refine our recruitment process, but we're already thinking about recruitment because we want these classrooms to be filled.
See, one thing I heard you say a little differently when you just answered her question was that you were looking at the classes students requested. So when you're looking back, it's what they requested, not necessarily the class they ended up in, because we know. If there aren't enough, we can't necessarily offer a class.
Right.
So you were looking at the requests versus just the classes that students were in?
Yes.
That was, that's great.
I've, I've got a question that, that goes back to your observation on sort of the trend over time. You, you observed how pathways were big, then it was all four-year college, now we're coming back. And so my question is, how do we avoid overcorrecting? So how do we avoid kind of cycling again towards too much emphasis on, on something that we end up, end up overcorrecting down the road? Because I, I want to see us, I guess I definitely want to see us committing to a strategy that five, ten years from now, we can say we're still following pretty much, you know, the same thing, you know, because we know that from our staff and from our community, if there's too much change too fast, or if the, you know, if we're steering the ship and tacking too often, then we lose confidence. So.
Great question.
See lots of nodding, so tell me what you think. Yeah.
Yeah. So our team, we, we talked, we, we've talked about this as a team, so I'm taking this, this slide right here. These programs are what's most logical for us to offer, but we've talked about ourselves, but you see here that there are other possibilities. So I think we overcorrect if we try to offer everything that's listed here. I think it's most reasonable and sustainable if we offer what we have in bold, and again, in the 2021 school year, assess to see how it's going, but also continue along this path of what we're currently doing of how are we leveraging our CIS classes, how are we leveraging our AP classes for students who actually do want to go into two-year and four-year universities and receive a traditional college education? So I think it's the balance of both. So I don't think we should offer too much, and I think as a high school, which we talked about today in our admin meeting, with a, a stu, a, a school with only eleven hundred students, I mean, it would be cool of us to be very careful and measured about how much we overextend ourselves, because we want this to be sustainable and we want this to be long-term. So I think it's a balance of offering career pathways, but also maintaining the, the traditional two to four-year route for students who are interested in that. And I think we continue to leverage our partnerships with the University of Minnesota and other community colleges that want to partner with us effectively to do our work.
And it feels to me like, Ben, even though this isn't really the work, but in terms of the end game, the way we promote, label, market, because that perception, you know, that perception that exists, perception becomes reality in the minds of our community students, et cetera. So we can drive a lot of that by just being very intentional about that, you know, as we're working hard to make the pathways a reality for a portion of our students and to make, to leverage it for that portion, we're still working hard to do all the other stuff you talked about.
Right. Dr. just had to say, and I think it's appropriate for me to point out that with the new hire of Amy, our communications person, she's working with schools, and we've talked about Dr. Heinz, teaching and learning, and others on our team, you know, really making it clear for students and parents what the pathways and the opportunities are in, in Richfield Public Schools and what that looks like in the end at Richfield High School. So being clear about showing parents what it looks like to get a traditional two to four-year education life at the high school, what it looks like to choose culinary arts pathway, what does it look like to choose auto tech pathway, and et cetera. And so parents and students will be able to see that we're offering a menu of things, though we're not over strengthening ourselves as well.
Yeah.
They see the choices.
Yep.
So I have read a little bit about the Burnsville programs, and one of the things I really noticed that they worked, that I think are helped them to be effective is partnerships with local businesses. So it is more than, you know, the school or the community college or where they're learning, but they're partnering, like you said, we are working on that with the auto technology and the dealerships in Richfield. But do we have other plans, like for computer science or culinary arts to partnership? So there's, you know, the people that want them and the place for them to go and the actual jobs?
I would be lying if I said that we had a, a potential partner in place for culinary arts, but I do know we have a, a potential partner in place with Best Buy possibly with our computer science program, and Corey, Quinn, and Dr. Heinz are working on that presently. But that's what we have right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I, I feel like I'm being a little bit of a curmudgeon. I guess I, I'm getting a few gray hairs, so maybe I'm getting to that position now. But at any rate, partnering with local businesses, I totally see the value of that, and obviously we're doing it, we should do it, we want to do it, and we do it with our eyes wide open knowing that Richfield Public Schools will be here for the long haul. Our business partners are under. Our business partners are under a different set of pressures and they may or may not be. So, yeah, doing that with our eyes wide open. Yep.
Right. I think for us, it's just getting very deliberate about some of the pathways that we're choosing and really aligning the courses and the supports that we have to create some logical opportunities for kids by really just spelling those out very clearly.
Right. Yeah, it seems like what Miss Daniels is like saying a lot is kind of like just having that opportunity and like, not, not more so like per, like obviously in doing so this, you have to promote it and, you know, influence kids to do it. But just letting students and teachers know that, hey, you know, there's multiple ways of success. The typical, or your typical or traditional, which she's talking about currently, right now is a two-year, four-year is not the only route to let them. And also I know we're talking about the, you know, metro-wise schools that are doing this. But also from my understanding, worldwide, this is, this, certain countries do this. And specifically what I'm particularly talking about is, I know German schools really, their school, their entire school system has a complete pathway through careers after school for people who don't pursue that higher level of education. And from my understanding, it works out very well for them, just looking at a global aspect of it rather than a metro. And so I definitely agree with it and I think it's also something that's, that we should let students and parents know about it and support it.
All right. Thank you, Principal Daniels.
Thank you. Do we have commendations?
Uh, we actually have no commendations today, so we are able to move on to the consent agenda.
So is anyone prepared to move the consent agenda?
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. A motion by Mr. Ashmead, a second by Ms. Brocki. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the consent agenda passes. And we will move on to old business and board policy review, starting with policy 503, international students.
All right. So Ann, we bring back board policy 503, international students for a second read. You'll note that there are not the guidelines or the addendum, which were in the previous old policy because we are not currently approved by the State Department to house and support international students. And so this is what our policy would at this point be blank. And so we continue to revise based on the feedback that was given by the board. And this policy in place talks about how and what we would do to support our international students, which if we do go down that road, we would implement this, this level of this policy. Previously known as the foreign students policy.
So despite, despite the legalese that's in here, that goes a little bit over my head, but I know it has to be in there. I'm going to move that we approve the policy as presented. I'll second. So J1, J2, all that stuff.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Ashmead. Is there any further discussion?
I will ask a question, which does not preclude the, the acting on this. But I guess I was curious why the additional considerations are pulled out in the way that they were pulled out? That didn't just, it didn't totally make sense to me, the distinction between the criteria outlined in number one and then why those four items were pulled out as additional considerations.
Those are specific, coming out of MSB to make sure that we're clarifying the special education components on which may typically, which typically in schools are by different sets of rules.
So it's duplicating things that exist in other policies just to make sure that it applies here as well?
Correct.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. So again, a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Ashmead. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the policy passes. We will move on to board policy review, review 501.2, early entrance to kindergarten, which is actually the guideline.
Right. All right. So just bringing back early entrance to kindergarten guidelines. I will apologize for having left in the old guidelines, but they are significantly different. And so we did leave those in and so those are on page 67, 68 and 69. But just as a reminder, we did a large transformation of those guidelines. And so if you go past the old guidelines to page 70, you will see the early entrance to kindergarten. The conversation about this guideline from last month or last meeting was about why April 1st. There's really a couple of reasons. One, April 1st helps us get ahead of the game from an enrollment perspective rather than waiting to that state guideline of May 1st. But then also there are significant logistics in regard to assessing a student, having them spend time within the school. And so we want to make sure that we're able to fully screen students who are trying to gain early entrance into kindergarten to be able to gather all information from not just an administrative lens, but from a school's base perspective and a parent-based perspective lens. And so we want that extra month to do that. And so I looked up why we were pushing for that April 1st. And so you see on page 70 and 71, both the guidelines and the procedures for which we will move forward in terms of, of early entrance to kindergarten.
I see that the request form is on the website too, which is nice.
That is correct.
I wasn't able to find it. So this, this is an implementation observation primarily that I'm going to make. I wasn't able, I mean, I did navigate out to the website and, and found some blank pages. So I think we just need to make sure that we're crossing the Ts and dotting the Is on the implementation side of it. This is just execution. Yeah. So, and, and Tia, you know, Tia Clayson currently occupying, feels like two different roles, both Director of Literacy and Director of Talent Development and Advanced.
She does both of those, yes. And then as we, one of the things that we are in the process of doing with communications is re devising how we overhaul our entire application component of the website. And so we're creating tabs and we're in the process of creating a much more transparent, wide-open application process and enrollment-based process, including getting that more prominent on the front page. And we're actually in the process of changing all of those, all of those papers.
Yeah. Yep. So I think, so those are just execution.
Absolutely.
On the ground, ground-level execution observations.
Any other feedback? We will move ahead with this guy.
Trusting in the ability of, of our leaders to execute effectively, I will move that we approve the policy, which is what our role is.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Ashmead. Is there any further discussion?
It would be approving the guideline.
The guideline.
The guidelines, yes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the guidelines are passed. And we will move on to board policy 655, family engagement.
All right. Third one to move ahead with, recommending passage of our family engagement policy. I believe this is the fourth read. And as you'll notice, we have moved the definition of parent up into our policy, which had previously been located within our guidelines to also make that very clear. Clarified some of our language and then making sure that we are showing how those plans are created at schools. Just as a reminder, the plans themselves are not part of the board policy or the board guideline. The methodologies are part of that board policy and board guideline. So I have before you today, policy 655, family engagement. And then also guideline 655-1, which has our guidelines, along with the form guideline 655-2, the family engagement plan or the template that's used then to engage parents and get that, that wide-ranging voice from across our district.
The little D is missing.
Right. There is a typo.
To be B and then it shows up again later in the document about should read, I believe that parents are encouraged to reactively in definitions.
Definitions. To be B. Parents are up, are encouraged to be, yep. Thank you for catching that.
There's, it's again later in the documents.
Okay. So it says encourage twice and we will make sure.
Yeah, I think it's more like a paste, probably a copy paste later in the document.
Any other questions or feedback?
Appreciate the connection of the joint. Interesting having this partnership to support students' academic growth.
I will, I don't want to hug all the motions, but I will approve the, this policy.
You tried to go home or something?
We still got the fancy bid construction.
There are a few other folks out here.
I will second that motion.
A motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Ms. Brocki. Is there any further discussion?
Just as a reminder, I'm assuming we are anticipating I will be correcting those two tense spaced errors in there in this, in this motion.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the family engagement policy passes with corrections. So we will move on to new business and bid authorization for construction project.
All right. So we are going to bring Mr. Holdgeno team from ICS up as we begin a conversation and see some of the cool, exciting things planned for RSTEM. Move us beyond our presentation from last meeting where we had a similar, similar conversation with our consultants in relation to RDLS. So with that, Mr. Hold, you take it away.
Thank you. And just as a quick introduction, so as Superintendent Unowski said, we are moving into a request for bid authorization for the RSTEM project. We have Andy and Mike here to share information about kind of that design work and what's going on, as well as a request for the actual action authorizing that bid request. So then I'm going to turn it over here and they'll share an update.
All right. Thank you. So again, I'll go through all the bland stuff and Mike will get you the pretty pictures. So the property schedule, where we've been, where we're going again, as we did previously. We've gone through schematic design, design development, and then we're here in front of you to give you an update on the construction documents we wrote a bid. We're planning to issue those on December 12th with a bid opening on January 17th. And then we've got phase construction throughout this project that would start this spring. And then we get to a point before school starts where we kind of halt, where we get the, what we're shooting for is the second and third floors to be done this summer. And then phase two would be during the school year where we're doing some work in non-student contact spaces, mechanical spaces on the lower level and potentially some of the admin area spaces that are carrying through there. And then the third phase would be the following summer where we go and complete everything else. On the first floor is what we have scheduled for that. So to kind of recap on the referendum scope, we've got district-wide secure entry improvements. These vary from building to building. When we were at, showing you the presentation for RDLS, there was a, what I'll call a larger addition to the building just due to the size of the building with RSTEM, there's space within the building. So we've got a much smaller addition to accommodate the secure entry. Mechanical improvements are throughout. The restrooms, of course, are getting addressed. Special ed space improvements. The kitchen and serving renovations, again, at RSTEM, when we met with Pam, this one functions well. So there's very minimal improvements actually to the kitchen and serving spaces at this building as compared to, again, RDLS, where we're putting an addition on for the kitchen. And then the long-term facilities maintenance items throughout the building we're addressing as well. Specific to STEM, we've got the site improvement to tie into RDLS and the secure entry relocated, which includes relocation of the administration space. And then when that happens, then we're relocating the kindergarten and the pre-K classrooms. We're relocating some of the sped suites and then opening up that media center to also offer some extended learning spaces there and then also in the, within the building on the second and third floor. And we also have some community gathering spaces that are tied into it. And then the LTFM stuff is the mechanical improvements, floors, ceilings, some casework selected as needed and updating the toilet rooms and then putting a fresh coat of paint on things. And I'll turn it over to Mike.
Great. Thank you. So really my part in this is to kind of get, much like dual, really just to emphasize that we, this is kind of the conclusion of many, many, many meetings with all of the various users of the school, school district. Met with multiple departments and the special ed technology, worked on district standards, worked on colors, met with the city, all these kinds of things. So a couple hundred meetings, here's where we are. As Andy had mentioned, we saw this the last time we met on, on dual. And so again, a similar approach to the site plan, basically moving the buses in the back for both RDLS and STEM. And then the drop-off would be made in front for both of them as well. This is again, just kind of a summary diagram. On the left-hand side is the existing, on the right-hand side is the proposed. Really it is a kind of a reorganization of the spaces within. The biggest one being in order to create the, the new secure vestibule, moving the admin from the east side of the building to the north side of the building. And then consolidating the classrooms kind of as we work our way up, creating special ed suites on each of the three floors. And then various other, we have preschool up in the, up in the upper right-hand corner. As Andy mentioned, we'll be starting on the, on the third and second floors coming in the summer. And that really, that sequence really has more to do with the mechanical phasing that we need to do in order to kind of start the farthest direction away from where we're doing most of the mechanical work. And, and the other couple of bigger programmatic items on the second floor, the creation of the extended learning areas that are attached to the, to the new media center. On the third floor, a similar extended learn area on the south side of the third floor. And then we kind of go into some just general things. So our secure entry function is much the same as, as dual, where you come into the main, you come into the main vestibule. We really aren't changing that a lot, although we are creating a door. And then essentially the lone addition in this building is kind of in the little notch that, that currently exists that exterior right now. We'll fill that in, create kind of the reception area. So that, so that basically forms the area that you do check in. And once you get into that area, I should take a step back during the, when students are dropped off, the main doors, both interior and exterior, kind of freegress in and out. At a certain time in the morning, the inner set of vestibule doors locks and, and everybody is forced to move into the reception area. From there, basically you check in and essentially be buzzed out into the school. So again, that's kind of the added, added part of the secure thing. I didn't show it on a diagram, but we are also, much like dual, we're adding other secure elements like other lockdown doors. So for instance, in a paddock situation, people from the administration side can hit a button and essentially lock down the stairway doors. We do have the four existing stair towers, all those can be locked down, plus a couple of other cross corridor doors. So we've kind of added that, that bit of security as well. Again, just a diagram of really consolidating all the kind of administration, student service areas. And then a view of the media center, again, just, just for your reference, the blue area that comes down used to be, there used to be a corridor, or there currently is a corridor, and what we'll do is change the corridor that's going east to west into more of this extended learning environment. Similarly, on the third floor, we'd be adding the same thing. So, so there's no longer really a hallway scenario where again, students can, can break out into this area. People coming in to read can, you know, use this area and, and it's just another, another learning, learning environment. The exterior view does not change significantly. Again, you can kind of see a little bit to the left of the RSTEM sign is where the new admin addition will be. And we'll carry on a similar look to what is there, given that we are not making significant changes to the, to the main entry. This is a view on that second floor, kind of across the media center. There's still our parts of the media center that will be locked down after hours. So the book stacks and a number of the other areas where they have other things that need to be locked up. And then the rest of the area will kind of remain open. We will work on kind of a furniture part that adds to this as well and make it appropriate for elementary students. And this is a similar view of the third floor area as well. So I think that's what I have. Any questions?
Very small question, but I noticed a school store on one of those prints. And I don't remember seeing that before. It was probably there and I just missed it. But is, is this the only elementary school that would have a school store actually built in?
It is. Well, it's, that is actually, I noticed that on the slideshow too, and that has been up for.
It is. Well, it's, that is actually, I noticed that on the slideshow too, and that has been up for discussion.
Okay.
The most current conversations are actually where that may be the fun club main office.
Okay.
It was kind of one of those spaces that during design, it was, I don't want to say leftover, but it was left unassigned. And there was a, a need for at RSTEM to have some sort of PTO school store. Not quite sure exactly what they sell or if it's more kind of like a community closet type thing or...
Yeah, it really is. There is, there is an existing room now that's just adjacent to the media center. It is an old classroom or what I suppose still could be a classroom in. So it's really just coats and boots and various things that I believe they do sell. So certainly if they were to maintain that and moving that up front is an option. Or as Andy said, the fun club being there is also a good option. So we're, we're still working that out, but essentially the room can function for either.
All right, so with that, we'll bring it back to Mr. Holgy as he brings forward the page in relation to a bid request. Because that would be the next step in the process.
So this is the whole presentation. We do have the request for the bid authorization here at the end. This is what actually gets published in the paper, so it is requesting that authorization to seek bids. That goes up on our district website as well. All is awaited and capsulate, but you saw with the, with the presentation as well as all the other work that's gotten into the HAC systems and things like that. Are all things get, that get submitted as part of those bid documents to contractors that are requesting that information.
Are you asking for, is this a vote or a resolution, Mr. Holgy?
It's, it's a vote. It's an authorization for bid.
Thanks.
I move we approve the bid authorization for RSTEM.
I'll second. So a motion by Mr. Ashmead, a second by Ms. Brackey. Is there any further discussion?
I just want to commend the team for, you know, bringing forward, you know, I think what is very, I guess, I've been impressed by a consistent approach across the entire district. You know, which I think we're starting to see that come to fruition now that we've seen three buildings kind of having moved pretty well through the process, at least the design phase. So I think that piece of it's looking really good. It's obviously a big team effort.
Okay, so all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the bid authorization passes. Thank you guys very much. So we will move on to guidelines, guidelines nine twenty-six point two for adopt a school assignments.
Right, so just as a reminder, a couple of years ago, we did policy nine twenty-six, school community relations. We hit guideline nine twenty-six point one. There were not changes at that time to nine twenty-six point two. However, we are bringing forward the change of guidelines nine twenty-six point two. And as we go through with our inclusion and equity-based work that we're doing as a district, we're also looking at our policies from a language perspective and making sure that they meet the standards of what we like to promote. And so we are posing that we change this guideline to represent a school program. Because as our board members on a yearly basis decide on a school to represent. And this is done typically in either the July meeting or the January meeting. Board, each, each one of you all has decided they will represent one of our schools. And so the only change is within the language component, changing out adopt and adoption to represent or representation. And then also changing that last sentence to actually align to what our current practice is. We do not actually require or suggest or have board members switch every single year. So just changing the language saying, to say, school board members are exposed to the possibility of representing multiple schools. And so it's recommended that board members are given the option, rather than changing schools every year, but given the option of representing a different school each year. So just making those very slight changes. And then depending on if you all would like to see this a second time, or we could also move forward with this today, depending on any questions.
I move that we approve the guidelines policy as presented.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Ms. Cole, a second by Mr. Tensing. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the guideline passes. And we will move on to board policy five sixty-three, advertising in schools.
And as we bring advertising in schools, this is a much more complex-based policy with, with a large overread. We are trying something slightly different with this particular policy. And so I will share with you what we have. You have in front of you both the redline policy or our first attempt at editing or revising, because there are significant changes as we update. Followed by our current policy. And then you also see the MSBA model policy. And so our redlining is trying to bring this particular policy up to date. And so we wanted to do some of that work for that first read, anticipating that we'll probably have three reads of this particular policy. The goal of this particular one is to talk about how we will and how we will, will not allow advertising within the school. And so specifically talking about nowadays, how we can reject advertisements if they are false, misleading, or deceptive. How we try to keep our staff, students, and facilities out of advertising to the greatest extent possible. Also basically talking about how we don't overall do advertising within our school list as a general practice. You'll also see that MSBA has done a significant consolidation of some of the past language. And so you'll see some redlining where we have actually removed a lot of the previous language, because it's not necessarily currently in line with MSBA model policy. And so you'll see a redlined version or a first revision, because we thought there were so many significant changes. Followed by our previous policy. And then followed by the MSBA policy for your reference. And we will plan to bring that back a little bit more cleaned up for next meeting. And also in the meanwhile, take any input if board members want to offer it today or over the next set of weeks via email or other communication.
So I have, there's a, there's a sentence, this is section three B. It's actually the last sentence that is added and it does come word for word from MSBA model policy.
Yep.
About the advertising device being erected or maintained within a hundred feet of a school that is visible to and primarily intended to. Suffice to say that I think I know what this is trying to say, but I also feel that it's extremely confusing. And so I think this is saying that we're not going to distract drivers.
Yep.
But I feel that you'd have to read it four or five times to necessarily come to that conclusion.
We will look specifically at the writing on the bottom of page one oh two, last line of three B. All right, so we'll work on that, bottom one oh two, three B. Any other input or thoughts?
My question was also related to three B, and it's not about the language so much as it is. I don't think in the three years that I've been on the board, there has been an instance of this coming forward to us for approval. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay. So it is not a particularly common occurrence. But this will guide what should happen in the case that somebody does want to advertise. And you ultimately feel like it is valuable, then you would bring it to us. Is that a fair?
That would be correct. Okay.
If I can recall correctly, and Sean, Christine, you guys might have similar recollections. I believe that the few examples that I'm aware of that actually exist within the district are typically scoreboards. Where we do have them branded with RBCU, because RBCU helps to free the cost of them, and that was board approved. And then there is also at football games, I think that there's that light, I don't know what you want to call it, but there's some advertising in the end zone.
Playboard.
Also board approved.
The other place I had a question about, and again, I think it's more about making sure I understand the implications of it. Is in section E, three E, which is a new addition, if I'm reading the redlining correctly. Which is that nonprofit entities and organizations may be allowed to use, you know, Ridgefield Public Schools for purposes of their advertising or promotions. But it requires permission from us in advance. And I guess my question is, how do we actually communicate that expectation? Or how do we, how do we govern it, given that it is advertising that others are doing that include us, as opposed to us doing it?
So when others want to use our students or our school for their advertising, they actually have to ask us permission and get our media-based permission? And so if, for example, the Hamilton for Education Group had wanted to use our students for their advertisement. They would have had to ask us, get written permission and media release from our students. In which case, we would then obviously have a process and come back to the board to ask and to clarify if that was acceptable.
So this too would come to us as a board for approval, the way that I am reading it?
That is what is in the MSBA policy, yes.
And maybe the question is, do you feel like that should come to the board for approval? Or do you feel like that should be an administrative decision that can be made?
I will reflect on that in the coming weeks and pull, pull together a draft that, that looks forth what is best for us. Appreciate the inputs specifically for three E.
Yes.
Yes, on, yes, on page one oh three. Got it.
Another nitpicky.
Yep.
Observation, I'm back to three A and B.
Good.
So A, so there, there is a different approval pathway through A and through B. So A, the approval pathway is administrative, so it's by the building administrator, it appears. And then B is school board approval. And it appears that the distinction between A is publications, whereas B is facility-based or sort of a hard surface. This is like software and hardware, it looks like to me. So I get it, but I'd like us to call that out. Maybe even just by, you know, a heading or something to say that A is relating to.
Building.
Publications and B is relating to building, to advertising on buildings and grounds.
Okay. So clarifying, three A is specific things like your books and publications. And, and B is larger things, more capital type, so.
Yeah.
Okay? Anything else before we take it back and come back with a cleaned up version for our next meeting? I appreciate the input.
Looks good. So we can move on to 2018 payable, 2019 levy certification. And Mr. Holgy?
Yeah, thank you. This brings back the conversation that we started earlier. It is, we, we have to make this decision by the end of December, December 28th. And so it's a recommendation, just to have some time here to discuss what the recommendations would be. Our recommendation initially is to make, to levy the maximum. There are two areas that Jim and I have been taking a look at where we can reduce an adjustment in the future. It is in a couple of the items associated with the referendum and the local optional revenue. A reduction of $116,457 in one category and then $35,446 in the second category. That really is tied to the fact that this summer, when we were building the levy, levy projections, we had some enrollment that was in place that we thought was going to be in here for this current year. We saw that reduction. And so either way, it gets trued up. Either it is something that we can correct here, since we know that we have some additional, some reduced enrollment for the current year. Or it will be adjusted two years out as part of a final adjustment, as part of that component. We've been working with the state just to clarify exactly what the implications are on that. So that would be one implication. With our numbers, that would bring down that projection to an increase of $12.73 on that average homeowner versus the 1999, as one option for consideration. The other thing we have talked about is some variability is that OPEB levy component. And I don't know if the board has more questions on that or conversations about options or recommendations. If there's some discussion, we can either take action tonight, or probably a cleaner way to do it would be to have some of the conversations. If there are questions or recommendations that we can then build into official documents coming back at that second meeting in December.
Well, I think I made my thinking clear earlier, but I can restate that. My inclination is to, is to levy to the maximum at this point in time. With the expectation that we may find ourselves in a position when economic times are tougher in the future. And it would be behoove us to build our reserves now in order to have some flexibility in the future. Whether it be maintenance of programs, whether it be underleaving as a way to give our taxpayers a break. I mean, I think if by taking this move at this point in time, when we're in relatively good economic times. We will be giving future boards a little bit more flexibility. So that's, that's my feeling.
I think I agree with the OPEB debt trust levy for the reason that you stated earlier. I think what I don't know enough about is that first option that you just mentioned. Thank you. And what, I think for, it would be helpful to know what are the potential advantages or disadvantages to adjusting that? Because I think if there, if there are ways to not levy the maximum, I think that is, you know, respectful of our taxpayers and of the community. While at the same time, I totally understand what you're saying. And so I think for me to be able to have an informed opinion, I don't know quite enough about that decrease that you just articulated was possible.
So we, we had projected, when we built the levy a year ago for the payable eighteen. We had projected a lower enrollment than what we actually started to see when we did our budgeting. And so we increased that enrollment to come for some increased enrollment and average day of membership. At a little higher rate than we should have. And so we were able, we built that into the levy assumptions. Given some timelines at the state, we made those changes in September prior to the final levy certification, but it didn't pull into the final levy. So what that means is they weren't able to readjust that back downward. And so those levy dollars show up here.
Okay.
What that means is we are essentially levying too much for the current year. But then two years from now, the referendum and the technology referendum, or the referendum in the local optional revenue would be reduced in two years from now. The one thing that we have been working with the state where, the only thing that would keep us from doing it is how they calculate out. If we end up with more enrollment than what we originally projected, we don't realize the net value of that total increase. Because they then look at what the maximum levy was versus what the maximum levy authority would be under the new numbers. And it's a detail where I'm not prepared to make that formal recommendation without clarifying that piece. If we have fewer students show up than what we had originally projected in the levy document. Then it goes on what that new authority is minus what the board actually authorized or certified as part of the final levy certification. So, and it's a matter of how it's calculated and we're trying to work through that. So we think we've got it figured and clarified. We have one more thing to do to dot our i's and cross our t's to make sure that we aren't putting that future revenue at risk. But in Jim and my conversation with representatives from the Department of Education. It looks like we would have to increase by about 150 pupil units to have that really impact us and have that net negative reduction.
I feel like my general inclination is we should be levying for the students that we have.
Yeah.
However, if we end up actually having more students, I don't want that to be used against us either. And so that is the, that is the issue that I am grappling with, so.
And I, I think we're on the same page. It's just me somehow getting in writing that yes, if this, then this. And realistically, our enrollment would have to increase significantly for that to happen. So we think we're safe, if we're not safe, then we still have some other areas that we're benefiting from it, but that would be the one piece. What it looks at is $116,000 in the referendum, $35,000 in the local optional revenue. So that total change on that is eighty... I didn't do my math correctly.
Hundred and fifty thousand.
Hundred and fifty.
Yes. So what we would do is we would look at, as long as there aren't negative long-term implications, trying to under levy by $150,000. To make sure that we are levying for the students that we have. And then obviously reducing to about $12 per year per average house in Ridgefield, or $1 a month. And so that's where we are at this time, and that's what we would look at if the board approves that or, or suggests that that is a logical direction. We will explore that option and come back with actual numbers in two weeks. We will explore that option and come back with actual numbers in two weeks. So you're okay with waiting till next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, we fully anticipate to be waiting till next meeting. Yes. I would say the other piece too, we had some conversations about this at fiscal planning. We didn't have exact numbers and stuff, and so that allows me time next week to bring that back to them specifically. You know, if the board has perspective, and, you know, I've heard some support for kind of where that is moving forward, absent mitigating factors, then that helps bring that with kind of where the board's thought is, and if there are strong concerns, then they can share that back or have that conversation as well. We did talk about kind of the general concept of if we can make some increases in that OPEB at the same time as not, you know, impacting taxpayers significantly, that that would be something that may be worthy of consideration at this point.
Okay, so we will bring this back in a couple of weeks, and we can communicate with you if we have further questions as we go.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holgy. We will move on to donations.
All right, so we have several. Best Buy Foundation approved a grant in the amount of five thousand dollars for Richfield Middle School in support of e-Metring, so thank you to Best Buy Foundation. Very generous from the Spartan Foundation, donating thirteen thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars to Richfield Public Schools for football equipment, five thousand dollars. New dumbbell sets for the RHS weight room, five thousand dollars. Band instruments, three thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars, and Hall of Fame plaques, four hundred and twenty dollars. We are very thankful for the Spartan Foundation. Then the Assistance League in Minneapolis donated seven hundred and fifty dollars to Elizabeth Sen Fanning, Richfield High School German teacher, for the purchase of German reading books. And then we actually had a ceremony with the Assistance League in here with a wide range of grants to a wide range of teachers. And the Assistance League does some great work supporting our students going on adventures to the Boundary Waters, to Fermi Labs, and to a wide range of opportunities to our students. We're very thankful for the Assistance League.
I will move that we accept these donations with gratitude.
I will second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Ashmead, to accept these donations with gratitude. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the donations are accepted. We will move on to advanced planning and legislative update.
A set of legislative update pieces. And so AMSD will be working at their next meeting to finalize their legislative platform. So we've seen drafts repeatedly throughout our fall meetings, so we'll bring back a final legislative platform for AMSD for us. Obviously, we finalized our legislative platform at our last meeting, which was great, because we, Mike Howard, newly elected state representative, isn't able to make it on the seventeenth. However, he and I met just this morning, and we had our own run-through of what are the top priorities of Richfield Public Schools and what are our highest priorities from our legislative platform, and he shared some of his priorities as he becomes that freshman legislator, representing Richfield and representing the area. And so we're excited to be doing that, and also not necessarily legislative, but Richfield has hired a new city manager, Katie Rodriguez. We had board members and we also had staff members participate in that process. And I will be sitting down with my city partner, because obviously, as myself, I am the manager, administrator of this organization, and Katie in January will be the new administrator-manager of the city organization. We'll be meeting next week to begin that relationship and begin that partnership when she launches her career as the Richfield City Manager in January. We'll be meeting preemptively in December to make sure that we are starting off on the right foot and we're keeping that strong partnership going.
I've got a question, which is kind of an overlap between the legislative piece and, I guess, the next agenda item. So one of the things that struck me about Craig's budget presentation was the share of our revenue that is coming from local sources as opposed to state aid. For most of my personal recollection, that was kind of a seventy-five, twenty-five split, where about seventy-five percent would come from the state and about twenty-five percent from local sources. Now, we've obviously, with the passage of a referendum, we have moved that to, I think it's one of the fifty-six, forty-four, you know, obviously, there's little bits, fifty-six, forty wants to be that. But the bottom line is that the share of school funding, which is provided by local sources, has gone up in Richfield. And my question is, do we know, I think it is the case, but I would like confirmation whether that is a trend that is statewide?
Okay, I'm going to have to look that one up and bring that back for the next board meeting, so I will be checking in, just repeating to make sure I understand. So we're going to look at financial comparisons statewide of local revenue versus statewide revenue, just to sort of see where those splits are.
Yeah, and I think it's the trend over time that would be very interesting. The reason that I'm interested in this, and this is then in thinking about our conversation with our legislators, broader conversations with the legislature as a whole, is at least the way I would interpret, if it is true that local taxpayers are picking up an increasingly large share of school district finances, what that would argue to me, given the constraints that exist upon school districts for funding locally, that would argue to me that our public has shown a clear support for K-12 education. You know, the K-12 education to public schools across the state, if this is true, is something that the public is supporting through voter-approved referenda. The question then for our legislators to think about, if we put this in the context, the broader context of Minnesota history, would be to think about where does that fit with the Minnesota miracle of the seventies, and basically the notion that education is a right, it's actually a fundamental responsibility of state government to provide that, as Craig showed, that uniform system of education across the state. And we know from our, the last half of the twentieth century, that the more we relied upon local sources of revenue, the less equitable that outcome was for us to be able to provide that across the state. You know, this is statewide. This is not a Richfield issue, this is not a, you know, this is a statewide issue. And I really think that we need, that it could be an opportunity for us to start to have a conversation that gets us away from the metro-rural divide, gets us away from the conversations about sort of us versus them stuff, and maybe hold the legislature's feet to the fire to say, are you putting your money where your mouth is in terms of the state meeting its responsibility for providing that education? That's my thinking. I mean, I feel like the big piece of what we can do is to arm our legislators with good information in order to have their conversations with their peers, because that's the way things are actually going to happen at the Capitol, is if our legislators, I mean, I know they're going to do a great job of representing our interests as a district, but we're not going to get anything really done unless they know how those interests align with all the interests, the interests of other districts, other constituencies statewide. And so I think if we can help our legislators to find those opportunities for alignment, we'll be helping everybody. That's my two cents.
So thank you for starting us off on information and questions from the board. Does anybody else have anything?
Just curiosity, board, anything? Have any of you had citizens complain to you about increased taxes?
Not to me directly.
Not directly.
Okay. What?
I won't make any snarky comments.
Okay.
No, I was just going to say, my mother-in-law used to, but then she moved.
Oh.
She was always highly supportive, highly supportive.
I think the comments tend to be about just the overall tax increase that people are experiencing as opposed to the schools specifically.
Okay.
I had one thing I was going to share, which is just, I so enjoyed being actually in this room on Friday with about twenty of our high school students, ninth grade all the way through twelfth grade, led by Mary Clarkson and Christina Gonzalez, to talk about safe and supportive schools. So this is the student group that is helping us think through our work to advance safe and supportive schools, and had a really great, lively discussion about our dress code policy. And so I think it's going to be wonderful to see the different iterations of that that will happen over the next couple of months and ultimately come back to us as a board at some point, I expect in the spring, to consider changes to that. But it was just a great way to start the conversation directly with our high school students who live it every day.
Okay, if there's no further information or questions, we will move on to future meeting dates. So we will meet again on December seventeenth, starting with a six P M. study session with our legislators, followed by a seven P M. regular board meeting, including public comment and a presentation by Sheridan Hills. And then that will be followed by our first meeting of 2019 on January seventh, a regular board meeting with Richfield Middle School presenting. Are there any suggested or future agenda items? So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Brockie, a second by Mr. Ashmead. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and we are adjourned.